First, 2025. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are joining us physically here at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Members of the public or presenters may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform or in person at the Great Hall here at Town Hall. Members of the public who wish to join virtually may do so using the Zoom webinar login information that is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Members of the public who wish to merely observe the meeting may also do so by watching us on television on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded, per Massachusetts general law, that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. Currently, the only recording that we are aware of is that being done by the local scene for the broadcast purposes that we previously mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, unless we have any other business, I would read the executive session language. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares. This would be in relation to two collective bargaining units, Plymouth Police Superior Officers Association and the Plymouth Police Brotherhood. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session at this time with a plan of returning into open session at approximately 6:00 PM.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 1, 2025. Please join the Board with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
First out of our business is the licenses.
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues have any questions or comments on any of the items listed under the licenses heading, I would make a motion to approve the various items listed thereunder as a group. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Administrative notes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blitzer?
Would I be able to take number three out of order?
Okay.
And I would move to approve the rest of the administrative notes.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty, with the exception of Admin's note number three. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Now back to Admin note number three. Mr. Blitzer?
Admin number three, the White Horse Beach Park and Committee. To dissolve that committee. I've heard this week from several members, the chairman, the vice chairman of that committee, and some of the other members, and they have agreed that their job is done as the parking program is in place, and they're very happy with how that parking program is working. So I wanted to thank them for what they've done, the job they did to get that program started. With that being said, I talked to them about other issues down there, and I had suggested at one point that maybe keep it together as a White Horse Beach Committee. And they get back to me, and they decided, because they were concerned, they have some concerns, trash, trash and obviously pickup of litter and public intoxication, just other things, and also if the parking program takes a setback and they start having issues again. But they called me today, Don Smith, I don't know if he's here or he's not, but he might be. Do I have, did you want to come up and speak? And why don't you say what you told me today? So why don't you, if you can come up and speak, and tell me what you said today?
So I'm Don Smith, live at 46 Pearl Street down in Manhamet. And I've been the chairman of the White Horse Beach Parking Committee for five-plus years, I want to say. We were tasked in 2017 to come up with a parking program, and in 2021, that program was initiated as a trial, and that worked well with the Plymouth Police Department taking care of enforcement. And then the three seasons since then, it's been an outside contractor bid-type situation. So the only real concern, or the concern that we have, the committee and the neighborhood, and I agree, it's probably time to disband things because our work is done. We just don't want to see a backslide on the program. It's working fabulously well. There's no more issues. We were in a war zone up until 2021 down there in the summertime. So the belief is that, you know, we're probably going to just set up something in a sidebar association and meet on occasion and come up with any issues that there may be and present to the Select Board of the town or what have you. So it's probably easier that way rather than going through the whole process of coming up with another committee and starting from there. The real issue down there was parking and the litter and that kind of thing we can take care of and make phone calls or what have you. So, and with that being said, you know, you're all residents down there, so you know what's going on. You keep your eye on the ball down there. And I know one of the questions you asked is the parking program. It's a private company hired by the town to monitor the parking down there. So I'd like to ask Town Manager Derek Budizzi to explain, you know, how that works, how that private company works, and who they answer to. I know that was one of your questions for me, too.
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, I think we can all agree that the parking enforcement over the last three summers has been extremely successful. Back in 2022, I think it was the first year, we started to outsource our parking enforcement to a private firm.
Derek, I'm sorry, this is Don Smith. You weren't in the room when he was chairman.
Yeah, good to see you. And so that continues to take place, and that will continue to take place this summer. That was, you know, that decision was made after the creation of the White Horse Beach Parking District, as you all know. So, you know, as far as parking enforcement is concerned, you know, we are always, you know, here to listen to concerns of the residents. I don't think there are any more parking concerns on a regular basis down in the White Horse Beach area. So for those reasons, I believe the committee itself only had a one-year appointment back in '22, I think. And so for those reasons, you know, if the committee feels like there's other, there are other issues they need to address, you know, we're happy to entertain those.
Yeah, well, they're, so you're happy just doing an association on the side? Nice, okay. Yeah, the only other question I have, you know, Derek, is who's the, who is the interface between the town and the enforcement company? Because we find that the last three years, they've gotten down there, and it's like committee members see them on the street, they're up at Manhamet Point, they don't belong up there, there's two of them walking together when only one needs to be there type of thing. So for those kind of issues, is it Silvio or who?
Yeah, I would say for now, we would work through the floor for the Assistant Town Manager's office, because I remember a lot of those questions and concerns that would come up as far as, you know, the contractor and what the scope of authority is. You know, questions that arise as far as not being able to move vehicles along, you know, we'd certainly refer to the police department. But I would say for now, just work with our office, and we're happy to take all those questions.
Okay, okay. We did come up with a list of the streets that need to be or have enforcement on them. So I mean, I can, I can get that in an unofficial way if you want to, Silvio, just to help whatever the contractor, whomever the contractor is.
And we've done this the last three years now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're, you know, we're happy to follow that same model.
Okay.
You send us that information, we'll work with the DPW, we'll get those signs up to ensure that there's, you know, it's the first thing the police department would say that, you know, they need to have proper signage so that they can issue citations.
Yep.
And so we know every year, the signs get stolen or they get lost, and so we're happy to go, you know, replace signs where they need to be and then work with the contractor. I think I'd have to double-check who's, who the contractor is this year. I know last year, the contractor had a QR code, so you can reach them directly. So we think that was effective, that was an effective model they had into last year.
Yep, the only problematic one was the middle. LAZ was, they spent half their time just power-walking around the neighborhood rather than enforcing. And who knows how much revenue was lost if they're not, if they're not writing tickets, so. We don't want to talk about, that's a problem in the past. We're going to move forward on that. But as always done, if issues come up, we can always get a committee together again if we have to. Understood. But I know we got a full house here. Can you just publicly name all the people on the committee so we can, I just want to thank them? Oh, boy. Cheryl Damiano is in the room. Thank you, Cheryl. Nancy Carini, Charlie O'Rourke, Deb Garston, Kelly McDonald. Have I forgotten anybody? Myself? I think there's seven of us, so. Well, make sure you thank them first. You did a great job down there. Thank you. Thank you, yeah, and we appreciate the town's help on all of this, too. So it's fabulous down there now, so, so thank you. So at this point, unless somebody else has any comments, I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the White Horse Beach Parking Committee.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. First agenda item, Agriculture Commission Appointment, one-three-year term. Brian Whalen, are you here? Come on up. Thank you. Just identify yourself for the record. I know I suggested...
Brian Whalen-Dennis.
Okay. And why do you want to be on the Agriculture Commission? What inspired you to?
My wife and I have a vested interest in right to farm within the community of Plymouth. We have a very small start of a hobby farm at this point, with some ambitions, hopefully to expand later. And so we wanted to make sure, I'm also a friend of one of the people on the committee that recommended that I join. And we have some goats, and so I know a lot about goats. And so that's one of the reasons that she asked me to participate, and I said, "Yeah, I could do that." And went to a meeting last night, and it sounds like a very good process that they've developed in order to resolve any sort of disputes and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Canty?
So I have two, one for the applicant and one for the town manager, but I'll start with the applicant. So thank you for being here. So is there anything that the Agricultural Commission is currently doing that you'd like them to continue doing if you were to be appointed? Or is there anything that they're not doing that you'd like to see them do if you were to be appointed?
Currently, they're still working on guidelines and a package of guidelines for proper farming techniques and farming parameters to maintain health of, whether it be animals, proper waste disposal, that whole thing. And one of the things that, for example, they have chickens. There's a whole section on chickens that they have completed, but they want to do multiple species of animals, including goats. That would be one of the things that I would be working on, that they wanted me to join for, is, from my knowledge, on goats and raising goats. And then, as well as other animals and species. Thank you.
So then, Derek, the materials say that we would be appointing him to a three-year term that expires on June 30th of 2028, but that's 38 months away from now. So would he have to reapply on July 1st, like as our annual appointment so that he gets, because he's coming at the end of a term, so his three-year term, unless his appointment tonight wouldn't start until July 1st of this year?
Jade, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I spoke with Brian, like, about a month ago, and suggested it start July 1st.
Okay. So you're comfortable?
Sure.
Waiting in the wings for?
I don't...
Three months?
Yeah, I can, I can do either.
So you have a preference to being appointed now and then having to reapply in three months? Or would you prefer to just wait? We can appoint you now.
I don't know. I'm not familiar with the logistics of all of it. I wouldn't mind being involved now. But if it's, if the logistics of it are such that it's not really feasible or not common sense, then I can wait, so.
I would recommend that you make the appointment this evening and then do a reappointment in this June during the typical reappointment process.
Right. We have a, we have like a, sometime in June, usually it's a large reappointment meeting.
Okay.
You just would need to, you could probably resubmit largely the same application at that time. You would just have to do that.
Sure.
Wanted to flag the issue for you because it's technically longer than three years that you're looking to serve, so.
Oh, right, yeah. Yep.
Didn't want you to lose out on a technicality.
Right.
Okay. I'm, I'm comfortable appointing him now with the understanding he would reapply, but I defer to my colleagues as their level of comfort.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Whalen-Dennis to the Agricultural Commission immediately, with the understanding that he is likely, unless he absolutely hates the next couple of months of life, he's likely to reapply to the remainder of the, for the three-year term starting on July 1st. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Eagle Eye Transport Solutions LLC. Ms. McKay.
Our representatives from Eagle Eye, Mr. Richter and...
Ari Rappas from Tolaria.
The second gentleman is from Tolaria. Before you, I think you have two documents. You have a First Amendment to the host community agreement between the town and Eagle Eyes, and you should also have what looks like a scanned PDF, which was a host community agreement that was entered into on June 4th, 2024. And that's about 11 pages, I think. The copy you have should have an indication as to the provisions that were deemed unacceptable previously by the CCC when it went up. On approximately June 27th, the CCC notified Eagle Eye and the town that there were deficiencies within that host community agreement, and we have been working to correct those deficiencies with the First Amendment that will work in concert with the original host community agreement that was signed June 4th.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions? Do you, would you like to add anything to that?
Rafael Richter, Eagle Eyes Transport. I think Attorney McKay outlined the reasons for the host community agreement request before you this evening. It's a process that's required by the commission for us to renew our license, and so without your approval, we would be unable to technically renew our license. So it's a, you know, I think a fairly straightforward process in that way. We do have another sort of unrelated request that we wanted to make sure to bring forward to you this evening. I don't know if you want to act on this matter first or hear from us on that as well, whatever your pleasure is.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Do we want to, do we want to hear about their second part now, or do we want to?
Do we need to hear the first part first, or do we just, I mean, we heard that, so do we have to vote one at a time, or?
They are distinct requests, and this, this particular request around the host community agreement isn't affected by the other requests related to change of ownership, if that helps. Happy to speak to it now or wait until?
Okay, so you told us a little about that, so where are we going with this now after that?
So, in the, this has been ongoing for over a year in terms of the process of doing this with the town. As we were approaching the end process, we had to make a difficult decision to start winding down our business, actually, just because the business model that we were engaging in, in our particular transport sector, really wasn't working out. And in the process of doing so, Tolaria, and I'll allow Mr. Raptis to introduce his company, approached us with an offer to purchase the license and continue the business, and ultimately, the employment of close to 45 employees that the company has. And so we come before you this evening as well, hoping that you will hear from us, hear from Mr. Raptis, and ultimately approve a change of ownership from Eagle Eyes Transport to Tolaria, Massachusetts. Certainly, if you have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but I think that's a pretty good summary for now. And I don't know if you want to allow Mr. Raptis to introduce himself and his company?
Sure, please.
Well, thank you, committee, for hearing us. My name is Ari Raptis. I'm the founder and owner of Tolaria National Secure Transport. Started the company about eight years ago, and we grew to become a nationwide presence. We already have operations in Worcester, Massachusetts, so we're expanding our operations now into Plymouth. Tolaria is a nationwide cannabis wholesaler and distributor where we handle transport. And National Secure Transport is an armored car company that works with the Federal Reserve Bank and handles cash and transit on behalf of dispensaries and financial institutions. We employ over 500 employees across the country, and we predominantly hire retired law enforcement across the country as well. And that's what we've done in Worcester. We're going to look to also bring that here into Plymouth and start to hire some retired law enforcement into our community as well and grow the team from 45 to close to 100 people.
Any more questions?
Yep.
What, actually, just quickly, what would you do?
I'm sorry?
Just quickly tell us what you do. I mean, I understand it, but so people understand what you do.
So here in Massachusetts, we'll handle fulfillment, so we'll aggregate product at the Plymouth location, similar to what Eagle Eye has been doing, and we'll handle that fulfillment out to the local dispensaries and statewide dispensaries.
Okay. All right, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
This question is for Town Council. So Kate, would, I assume the answer's yes, but I'd rather ask it and have it answered. So we're approving the host community agreement with Eagle Eye and then transferring ownership to a new owner. So I assume the new owner will be beholden to the agreement we worked out with the prior owner and all the terms and conditions thereof, but I would like audible confirmation of that.
So the host community, I think that assumes, first of all, that the CCC approves the First Amendment. And just given the way that things have been going with the CCC, I don't want to say that's a big assumption, but I would say if the First Amendment was to be approved and sent back, the original host community agreement in a provision that was not flagged as problematic, it's paragraph 19, does address assignment, successors and change in corporate structure and/or control, but it does, I'm not going to read it word for word, but it does require approval of the town. So that would be the board at this point. And I'm not sure what other factors you would consider in whether or not to make that approval once the First Amendment came back, but the original HCA does provide for that to happen. It does allow for assignment or successor.
And the assigned or successor in business that assumes ownership would be beholden to the other terms in the agreement contingent upon CCC approval of the agreement and its terms?
I would think so. I only qualify that with, depending on what the CCC says. Just because they have approved things in certain agreements and then not approved them in others when it's virtually the same thing, I would defer to them because ultimately, they may find some reason why that might not be all right. But assuming that the CCC approved it, I don't see why that wouldn't carry over, why the first agreement would not be binding on the second based on the language in the HCA.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
So Kate, the cannabis, because I've gone through this with a couple of, a couple of new businesses, and actually one that's already here, too. And the Cannabis Commission has been asked, asked us to rework host agreements. They need a lot of finances. Basically, the host agreement is the deal that you pay X amount a year to the town. And what the Cannabis Commission is looking for, they want, they don't, they want to know where's this money going. So they want financials from the town, you know, they're very, this is very regulated, what these fellows have to do. And in our council, you were putting, you had a rework. Is that all done now, that host agreement?
The First Amendment that is before you is meant to address the deficiencies identified by the CCC. Some of those deficiencies were the original language in the original HCA about community impact fees. So the amendment contains Section 3, which is meant to replace, as long as the CCC agrees, the deficient language and get it in line with what the CCC is now requiring since they amended the laws and the regulations in 2022.
But in late terms, they want to know where the money's going, right?
I think the CCC, the regulations they have put in place make it very clear that they want to know what the money is for, what impacts, if the town is doing that, what the impacts are, what the cost is.
So we're not extorting?
There's a limit that I think it can't be more than 3% of the gross sales, and the town has to invoice at a certain timeframe, and then appeals or challenges to that have to be done within a certain time. So the timeframe is also fairly regulated in terms of challenging and accepting payment and getting invoices out. But that is all addressed in the amendment.
Right, okay. And you had this agreement before, but they've changed this agreement you had originally when you opened eight years ago. You had this agreement, but now it's all changed, and that's what, that's what he had to go through, the new owner, so.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Thanks for your help.
We should, the board?
Assuming we can take them both as one vote, I would make a motion to approve the host community agreement and the transfer of ownership request.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Plymouth Arise. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chair Quintal and the Select Board, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and with me is the Arise team, Emily Wilson and Jay Gardner. Just wanted to present to you tonight an update on something that we stood before you almost a year ago and kind of kicked off, if you will, in terms of opioid funding settlements from the state that came down and wanted to update you as to where we were in that process. And let me just start by saying, it is an honor to lead this charge in this town, and you, as supporters of this, would be and will be so extremely proud of all the hard work that was done so far in this endeavor. So, is my clicker, do I have a clicker? Oh, thank you, thank you. There's the clicker, okay. So we are Health and Human Services Department in the town of Plymouth, and we are the bridge to resources in our hometown. Our mission, you can see, we've, we've explained it over and over in the most positive of ways, but we really strive to connect people with vital resources and services within our community. Comprised of HHS is the Center for Active Living, which is the senior center, the library, public health, recreation, and veteran services. And as earlier stated, tonight, I would love to spotlight our FY26 Plymouth Arise Strategy. What is Plymouth Arise? Just for everyone, for the purpose of understanding, Plymouth Arise stands for Plymouth Addiction Response and Improvement Strategies Effort. Is the town's coordinated response to the local opioid epidemic that aims to increase community engagement and reduce stigma around opioids, other substance use, while strengthening community capacity and enhancing resources for residents. The funding for the opioid arise is provided through the mass municipal abatement funds and federal litigation settlements. Just so people know where the funding arise from, arose from. See what we did there? I'd like to point out the FY, the inaugural year, FY25, we kicked off this program, and the grantees included, the awarded grantees included Bay State Community Services, Brockton Area Multi-Services Incorporated, known as BAMZI. You might be noticing their new billboard on Route 3A with the Arise Funds. High Point Treatment Center, Plymouth Public Schools, and to the moon and back. And they are represented here tonight because they are that caring and that passionate about what they do. what they do, and we really appreciate, if you want to give away grantees, thank you. Woo! I love that. Thank you, Silvio, for leading that applause. So some things we want to share with you, what's important, what have we done over the last nine months? Well, $295,171.43 we gave to our community and to these grantees in an effort to combat the opioid crisis right here in Plymouth. Hundreds of Plymouth children, adults, and families have been served thus far by the FY25 Arise grantees, and those are really important statistics, but I'd rather also, it's important to give you real life examples of what's happened in Plymouth. For example, home-based service visits for at-risk families, including young moms with babies under 12 months of age, have happened right here in Plymouth to discuss newborn care, assist these young moms, offer mental health screenings, and other prevention services at no cost to these families in Plymouth. Another example, any child under 18 who had prenatal opioid exposure and their families have received free, no-cost support, referrals, assessment, and connections to care in their community. To date, 12 families in Plymouth have benefited from this program. This is a national model, a well-revered national model being developed in Plymouth for the very first time. If you look at the next line, 50-plus grantee emergency and recovery scholarships have been issued to Plymouth youth and adults. Let me give you some examples of those. There's two Plymouth students, a nursing school student whose grandparent, raising their grandchild due to parental opioid usage, was driving their grandchild to and from college every day on fixed income. A fuel assistance scholarship was given to this grandparent to offset this cost, and that child may continue to engage in the nursing program here in our community. A vocational program student, also impacted by parental opioid abuse, was given a scholarship to purchase the tools necessary to enter the workforce with the right equipment. That student didn't have money to buy the tools necessary to enter the workforce. Both of these examples not only illustrate much-needed support, but a creation of opportunities to impact positive workforce and economic development in our own community. We are helping kids, these grantees are helping children strive to reach their goals despite the obstacles of opioid influence. Also, 16 HHS site visits and meetings with local opioid resources and partners were conducted by this department. 12 nalox boxes have been placed in key areas around Plymouth by the grantees. An example of this is in every laundry room in a local apartment complex where there's no staffing, but should something occur, there's access to saving lives. The Massachusetts State requires there are opioid abatement target strategies that must be met by grantees. There are seven. Plymouth has hit seven out of seven in year one. Six HHS consultations were completed as requested by other mass municipalities. In other words, seven other towns in our first year came to Plymouth asking for guidance from us, how do we do this? How do we get money to our community? And three HHS community forums were held on local impact of opioids and abatement funding. One happened today in this room. Some quotes from some of the data that we've gathered so far. "I want to be a better man, son, and father to my child." That is a RAP participant. RAP stands for Wellness Recovery and Prevention Project, which is done through High Point. Another quote, "These children are at risk of stigma due to their birth history and high rate of behavioral health diagnosis. Our research shows that they are underserved compared to their peers." These sound like great national quotes, maybe you might see on a news station. This is Plymouth, and this is exactly what we're doing right here. So what does Plymouth Arise look like at a glance? So our FY25 grantees provided three-quarters of pilot project data so far. This data shows that the grantees serving range of residents, including at-risk children, parents and caregivers, grandparents, and veterans in your community. This data so far has demonstrated that the grantees are on track to meet project goals and key initiatives. This is key because it's set in Plymouth apart through innovative community strategies and programs created and implemented by the grantees here tonight. These grantees have also created a cohesive collaboration as a result of this grant process that has allowed their own network to expand. To date, they have been able to develop community partnerships in our town through referrals and outreach with over 35 Plymouth businesses and organizations. We're only nine months in and just getting started. What's the new rollout look like, the FY26 timeline? We are launching today our second-year FY26 mini-grant program. We held a community forum today. The RFP, Request for Proposals, was issued to the public today. It is on the town website for anyone that's looking to apply. Those applications will be due to Health and Human Services on May 1st of this year. We have an independent review committee that evaluates those applications and selects the grantees. That was important to us to ensure full transparency of this process. The FY26 grantees will be notified in June 2025, and the funds will be dispersed in early FY26 upon receipt of those contracts. Where we've been and where we're going. So we've been featured so far, Your Town Arise has been featured, and the grantees and the mass municipal associations, The Beacon in January 2025, WBR News, December 24. There was a roundtable visit by Senator Warren, who wanted to meet privately with the grantees based on being impressed with what Plymouth is doing statewide. That happened in October 2024. The Mass Nonprofit News, August 2024. WCVB Channel 5, Mike Bodett News did an in-depth profile of Arise and one of our grantees. The Plymouth Independent has featured some of our work, and we're honored that we have been asked to speak at the Mass Municipal Opioid Abatement Conference as part of a panel in May 2025, and they've asked us to speak specifically on how we do this mini-grant process and to create and provide a toolkit as to how to do this for the state, for any municipality that is interested in doing this. Where are we looking to go beyond that? Our strategy is to connect residents to critical opioid-involved resources, create the Plymouth toolkit requested by the state to share at the state level with other municipalities. We want to align with state goals of regional collaboration and creation of specialized positions to maximize this impact. We're going to look to increase opioid dispersment in FY26 and serve as a model for municipal collaboration. We do aim to be the leaders going forward for many years in this state, in this opioid remediation distribution. And for those of you, this beautiful picture of our very first Arise ceremony, save the date, invitations will be sent shortly for June 10th, 2025, as we honor our first-year Arise grantees, give you an update as to exactly what they've done, and maybe introduce some new Arise grantees. Thank you so much for your time. Most importantly, thank you for your support. Without the town, we would not have been able to do this. Any questions? I'm more than happy to answer, but thank you to the boots on the ground in the back that make all of this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
Michelle, great presentation. This, the opioid crisis is still active, and it's, we have these groups out here, and I see Mike Kelly back there with BAMZ, and I wanted to point out Brockton Area, they have an office right there outside of Cottage, and they're helping Plymouth residents, the addiction, whether it's opioids, whether it's alcohol, the mental health crisis, all these groups that you work with that got these awards, so well-deserved, and the folks out here, a lot of people don't even know these, these groups exist, these nonprofits exist, and I just want to thank you for what you're doing for our community. I have a question for you, and Mike might be able to answer this. Are we making any progress with the opioids?
I think we're absolutely making progress. This, listen, if anyone knows Mike Kelly, come on up, Mike Kelly. Come here. He loves to talk about, he's very passionate about this, so he can share with you, but I know that we, the strives that we've made in Plymouth, because of that tight interweaving, it's one thing to just tackle the issue or someone in crisis, it's another thing to spread through the community, all of these resources.
I've learned so much in a year about this. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Michelle, everyone here tonight, and the other grantees. I'm Michael Kelly, the program manager for Plymouth Cope. I'm also a homeowner in Plymouth, and I'm also part of the recovering community in Plymouth, and I celebrate 18 years of sobriety today.
Wow.
I know, I know. So I feel compelled to share that, not for the applause, but just to let you know that the work we do in the town is very true to not only myself, but the staff and the other grantees. I had a few notes, but bear with me. Just to put the focus back on what we've been able to do for the town with this money is we've actually given out 60 individual scholarships for $250. It helps people in early recovery, rent with sober houses. Some of these guys coming out of like High Point have nothing, we can take them to get clothes, that kind of stuff. We've been able to help, help people get their IDs. We've also created an incentive program to help people test for HIV and Hep C, and we've already given out 180 incentives to do that. We have found a mystery that has been going on with HIV for 30 years, is how do we test people every month? And with these incentives, we have people coming back, to the point we had to get appointment cards, so pretty, pretty rad, and pretty pleased with that. As far as the impact on the addiction piece, we see people every day that's getting the help. We've given out thousands of doses of Narcan. We've created a safe space for people to come and get into treatment, and we've also been able to solidify our relationships with the other programs in town and help people wherever they are and whatever they need. So I really am pleased to have this moment to speak tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are all human beings. These are people from our community. Okay, that's where you help them, and it's not how much the legislature does, but this is all from the money that they're bringing to our town.
And we're making sure that the source of this money is going to help people, exactly. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you very much.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, I commend you on your, the longevity of your sobriety. Not everyone makes it out, and I know among the community, you're not out until it's over, but you should really be commended for how long you've stayed sober. Not a lot of folks. Well, that's my next point, and not a lot of folks know this about me, but I'm actually the product of a substance abuse family, and I'm particularly heartened by the support that you folks are giving to children in the community. And this goes to you, Michelle, your department, and to the rest of the folks who are here, who are grantees. Drug addiction is a vicious cycle, and for the children that you're helping in the town of Plymouth, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you so much, Mr. Golden. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Michelle, when, when Michael says that he's given out thousands of doses of Narcan, he hasn't administered them, he's given them out. So what is, you give somebody a dose of Narcan and they just take it for if and when they might need it? Well, can you walk us through that?
Sure, and I'll defer as well if you have more to add, since the boots on the ground do the actual work. The Narcan is really, obviously it saves lives, we know that, but people take Narcan because they have loved ones that they know that might succumb if they don't have something to help. It's really, think of it as a neighborhood helping process, as, as simple as that may sound, or as far-fetched as that may sound. Really, it's there for people to take to assist your fellow community members in the, or family members in the event, let's say there's 18 years of sobriety and then 19 years there's the misstep. Somebody can help somebody else, save their lives, but also maybe it's a reality check to say the help is there, if that makes sense.
No, that makes great sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
So Michelle, I appreciate the work that you've been doing, and Mr. Kelly, congratulations on your 18-year anniversary. I have known people in my personal and professional life that have struggled with addiction, and some have made it out of it, and some have not. It's, it can be a very challenging situation, and I think too, a lot of people, a lot of people that suffer from substance use issues are perceived as being others, and they're, you know, we don't see them, but you'd be surprised how many people you interact with on a daily basis that have some type of substance use disorder, and it can have a profound impact on themselves and the people that care about them. And I think doing what we can to support those individuals and get them back on the right track so they can take control of their lives back from the substance that has a grip on them is, is very good work, and I commend you for your success. I'm sure the people that care about you are happy about that, and I certainly commend Health and Human Services for trying to make the best of the situation that we have with this settlement money and trying to make it, the return on that investment not be felt in terms of dollars and cents, but in terms of moments with people that wouldn't be there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Spring 2025 Special Town Meeting Discussion, Article 12. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board would change their vote to communicate the town meeting that we would like to take no action on this article.
Motion by Mr. Mahoney?
So I would, if that's a motion to reconsider our recommendation to town meeting and request a no motion, no action at the request of the petition, or I would second that motion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Mahoney. Second by Mr. Canty. Discussion.
Sure. So I, I can second the motion, because anybody can second the motion. I voted against this the first time. I will not belabor the point by bringing up all the points that I made last time, but I would note that since our initial hearing, we have received a number of emails and other communications from constituents, at least what I have received is, I would say about 90% against Special Town Meeting Article 12, about 10% in favor of Article 12. Personally, I think we have an odd cultural fascination with guns that I will never fully understand. But as I said previously, I do not believe that more guns in more places means more safety. I know that a lot of folks are concerned about the idea of being in this building or other municipal buildings, knowing that people will be aware of the fact that they could carry here. I know that prior to the enactment of this law in October of last year, that was permitted, but it was not well advertised. So I think a lot of people probably assumed, because you can't in federal buildings, you can't at schools, you can't at a number of other locations, that you couldn't bring it in here. But now that people are going to be aware of it and are alarmed by it, I, I still feel the way that I felt before. I do not believe that opting out of this law is the right choice, and if there are constitutional arguments to be made, they should be made through the judicial review process and not through us signing off on opting out of a law. So that's my position, was my position at the last hearing, it's my position now, and I hope that the board will go no motion, no action on this request to town meeting. I would, though, point out that because the warrant has been signed, that a town meeting member could still move this article at town meeting floor, and I've heard that at least one is interested in doing so. So whatever your personal opinions on this warrant article are, you should still be prepared to argue that if someone does make a motion at town meeting, whether you are for this or against this, because it will still be on the warrant and could still be moved by a town meeting member or anyone else that can make a motion at town meeting. So, those are the, that is the conclusion of my remarks.
John, and then Charlie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just echoing Mr. Canty, obviously we've heard from dozens, if not hundreds, of our constituents. Obviously, some of them are occupying the first and second rows this evening, but on this topic, I break it down to, there's three options. And that's, you don't opt out, you enforce the law. Option two is you don't opt out, and basically ignore, nothing changes. Or three is you opt out. And the majority of the communications I have with individuals are, what does number one look like? There's been no baseline set, if you're going to enforce this. I've talked to security professionals with respect to screening. There's a whole, you've seen emails flying between individuals of town meeting, asking, there are dozens of legitimate questions. You know, and this has been boiled down to one building, the structure that we're currently in, it is more than that. So, how many of the buildings are affected by this? How many of them truly have a, you know, maybe a security or a threat level? And if, if and when screening is put in, what does that look like? The infrastructure, the personnel, and what is the cost associated with it? And I'm guessing, I'm not even guessing, we know that if the motion is made on town meeting floor on Saturday, that some of those questions are going to come up, and I'm looking, you know, I'm looking at the town manager, and I'm not suggesting that we put tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars into some sort of analysis of this, but these questions will come up on town meeting floor, and I think in the short-term future, we need to talk to some, you know, our individuals in law enforcement, at least get some baseline, ballpark analysis of what that would look like.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and John, I appreciate, Kevin, what you said. This, this was presented to us a couple of meetings ago, and I understood the article, I understood where the chief was coming from, and I, and I voted. I voted the way I felt and, and what I understood. Since then, I've gotten a lot of emails, both for the, actually first, it was against the article, and then recently a lot for the article. And, and so the way I feel is, all we are, we're an advisory to the town meeting. Town meeting actually has the ultimate decision to vote on this, on this article. And it's, it really, it's not about, I was elected to represent the residents. So with that being said, I, I will, you know, go with the board and ask for no action, and there's an agenda item coming up next that I will address afterwards, and what I would like to see happen. But ultimately, no matter what happens, it'll be up to town meeting to listen to the residents, and that's what we have to do. We got to listen to the people that, that voted for us, and vote, as they say. I have my opinion, I've said it, and I'm not going to say it again on how I feel, but I'll, to take no action, I have no problem doing that on this, on this item. So, thanks.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I said this from the beginning, I believe that the courts should be the ones making this decision. I don't think that town meeting is the appropriate venue for questions of constitutional right. We know that there are three pending lawsuits per the chief's comments at our original meeting against this, this, this law. I would prefer that we let the constitutional process for reviewing the constitutionality of law to play out, rather than have it divide us on town meeting floor. So I would encourage my former colleagues on town meeting that we take a pause, let that happen, see where it lands.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it, and I know there's a motion, but that's okay, because it went a little fast, but anybody that wants to speak, come on up and identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. I'm Pat McCarthy, a longstanding town meeting member of over 30 years, as well as a board member of the League of Women Voters of the Plymouth area. And I just want to thank you, the select board, for allowing me to speak, to make some comments, and thank you, Dicky, for allowing me to do this, on your discussion of Special Town Meeting Article 12. Town meeting members rely on the important information on town meeting articles presented to them by the article sponsors and the various boards and committees who review them. I appreciate the opportunity to learn more and ask questions. Town meeting members are the final decision makers, as you've said, as to what is best for the town of Plymouth. It is important, and I thank you for reconsidering your previous vote on Special Town Meeting Article 12. Massachusetts has been a leader in gun safety and has one of the strongest laws in the country. In 2024, the state passed a comprehensive bill to strengthen their laws. I and the League of Women Voters support that law, and doing all we can to keep our citizens safe, not allowing guns in municipal buildings helps with that goal. I hope you agree and vote no on supporting Article 12 of the Special Town Meeting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment?
About this?
Yeah, about this.
Because you can vote, continue.
After we, yeah, after we get this done with, we're going to vote it and move on. So, shaded of anybody online? Seeing none? No comment? I agree with all yous, but I also agree with the chief, and I also agree with the Second Amendment. The way I see it, as I've sat here for 20 years, and the laws, they're voted positive to opt out of this, is the same as it's been since I've been sitting here, and I have no issue with that. And I don't think a lot of people understand this article, and I think that's the problem. I'm not saying, and neither is this article, and this is my own personal feeling, to arm town hall. What it, what I believe it's saying is, it's the way it has been since the pilgrim landed. So, and I think that's the disconnect. So, for that reason and those reasons, I'll vote against this motion and let it still go to town meeting, I'm sure, but. So with that being said, Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
I vote yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, no. Thank you. Non-binding ballot question for the May 25 local election.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I asked you to put this on the agenda. Mike, try again. Okay, sorry. I asked you to put this on the agenda for the same reason I started to talk about. This, this article is, it's really, it's not about how I feel. It's a, because I, and I have an opinion, and, you know, but it's about how the residents feel, and I really, truly believe that ultimately, it's, it's, town meeting is going to vote on it, no matter what's happened. So what I'm asking for, and it's, you know, it's a complicated issue, we get people's rights versus public safety, that's really what it comes down to, and it's not something we should take lightly. And so I really believe we need to hear from the residents, okay? Not five selectmen, and, and it's going to go to, we can advise it, but it's going to go to our 162 members. So what I'm proposing is putting a non-binding ballot on the May 17 election that we have time to do. It's not going to cost, it's not a special election, it's not going to cost any more money, and we'll be able to use that, town meeting can use that, and we have some members here, as a tool to really do what you say, represent the residents, okay? I get accused of, I represent the residents. So, when the, when the vote comes in, you'll be able to see precinct by precinct how everybody voted. And then when it comes, then we take no action, I ask you to take no action Saturday, let's hold it to the, to the fall town meeting. And at that point, use that non-binding, the results, as a tool to see how your precinct voted, and vote accordingly. That's the only fair democratic way to do that, I believe. So, that's why I'm proposing that we do that, a non-binding question on the, on the May 17 ballot.
Mr. Canty?
So I think, given that town meeting is this Saturday, and that this, while we have requested a no motion, no action on Article 12 under the last article, Special Town Meeting Article 12, any town meeting member, as I said in my comments under that, can move this, and we have heard from multiple that they're interested in moving this, which means that this is, regardless of our changing course here, is likely to be debated and then voted on by town meeting on Saturday. And I think we heard earlier tonight that the deadline for a non-binding ballot question is not tonight, it's next Tuesday. I think it's premature, in my opinion, given that it is going to go before town meeting, for us to put it on the ballot at this point, because I, I think that's going to be perceived as basically doing an end run around town meeting's ability to, to debate and discuss this particular item in their purview, since it is on their warrant, and it's likely to take up a significant amount of their time, if I had to predict it myself. So, I am not in favor of doing things in this order. I think town meeting should have its day on Saturday, and maybe into Monday. We'll have to see how town meeting goes. It lasts as long as it lasts. But I would like to see town meeting review this, now that it is before them, and see what happens from that before I consider voting on a ballot question to, in my opinion, sort of bypass them. I don't think that's the right way to do it, in my opinion. So I will be voting against this. For those reasons, I think town meeting should have its day, and then we can see what, if anything, we want to do going forward. I do not anticipate I will change my opinion regardless, but I think there are procedural issues with doing it in this order. Thank you.
I respectfully disagree with that. Town meeting can vote to take no action, they can vote to take, they can vote to support it, or they can vote against it. If they take no action, we can, we can see the results of the election, and then we can determine whether we want to put it back on the, the fall town meeting. So, I'm trying to give a tool, I'm trying to let everybody gauge. I mean, we're getting emails both sides now, and I just, I'd like to see the, you know, the citizens vote on it. And similar to the NIP ban was, was very helpful, because, but that was a special election. This doesn't have to be a special election. So, I disagree. Town meeting can do what they want on Saturday. They have three options, what they can do. And if they choose to take no action, which I'm urging them to do, and wait till May 17, bring it back in the fall, in the meantime, the law will stay in effect. It's, it's, so it's going to be in effect, and then after the results, we can see where we're going to go from there. It's just, it's the only way we can, you know, you can see how your precinct voted, and that's really how you should be voting. You should be, if you're truly going to vote the way your constituents want you to vote, look at the results and vote how they voted. So, and I have my opinion, and I'm not going to tell you, I've already said it, but I'm not going to try sway, to sway any, sway anybody either way. The only last thing I request, if this gets voted, if it goes on the ballot, is please, everybody, ask questions, get educated on this, understand why the head of our law enforcement in Plymouth wants this article. Just, just ask the questions. And I'll throw one last thing. I would, I hope we get a stat out there for what it would take, because the only way you're going to keep guns out of buildings is by having security and metal detectors, and I'd like to see a number, so everybody knows what that number would be, to, to, to really secure our buildings. I think it'd be staggering. So with that said, I, I hope this, I can get a second on this motion.
Before I second it, I just want to see if anyone else has a comment, wants to make a comment on it. Did you want to say anything, David? I see, yeah, come on up if you want to speak. Just identify yourself for the record, press the green light on, no fighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt Tavoris, Precinct 2 Chair, Committee of Precincts Chair, Committee of Precinct Chairs Chair, it's a mouthful. You all know who I am. So, I wasn't planning on speaking about this, so I'm sorry, I'm a little tongue-tied. I understand what Mr. Blitzer is going for, he's looking for temperature of the room, if you will, across the, the town, but I do have to support what Mr. Canty's saying, and that, and I wouldn't be doing my job as a town meeting member or as a precinct chair to not say, let town meeting do its work. As we know, there are a number, several people that have looked to push this article forward, or to move the article on Saturday, and that is well within their right, and I welcome that, because it's part of the process. And then let town meeting have its debate. I understand what Mr. Blitzer is going for, and looking for kind of an overall census across the town. I think that bringing it up, at your next meeting, or to hold the meeting to decide whether to put it as a ballot question, would be more prudent in the timeline of things. I also take a little bit of objection that, I understand where Mr. Blitzer was going, but to say that this, you view this similar to the NIP ban, the NIP ban already had action by town meeting, and then the special election happened regarding that. So in this case, you could actually make a process that wasn't reversing town meeting, because you're looking for a non-binding vote, I don't know, and then you could, you could possibly think about bringing it back up in the fall town meeting. That's kind of my, my feeling, is that I think my, the members of town meeting would like to debate this, and would like to, to have the opportunity to do this. If this comes in, I think this is going to create more confusion to this article than already has happened, and to let the work play out, and then... And then, I, by all means, uh, bring, bring forth a, 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 a town election question, um, I, we can see it on the May ballot, you'd still be within the timeline, and then we can bring it back to fall town meeting, but let town meeting do its work, I think that that's what all, uh, the other 161 members that I, I, I work with would like.
Matt, hold on, Matt, I, I just wanna respond because we're in discussion here. I respectfully, I, I just wanna say that the nip ban is really an example of, had we had that question on the ballot as a non-binding question before town meeting voted on it, uh, it might have been a different vote by town meeting, because the nip ban passed and town meeting voted against it.
Right.
So there, there's an example that we should, we should have had a non-binding vote to gauge the temperature of the room. So, uh...
Yeah, I, I completely understand.
Again, I, I, this, the nip ban's over, I don't wanna get that...
Well, you used as an example.
I'm just saying, it's an example of town meeting voted and the residents wanted it. So that, I, I don't wanna see that happen again.
I would encourage our residents to reach out, just like our residents have reached out to this board, have probably, unfortunately, to the town manager, reached out to him. I know, speaking with the chief, they've reached out to him as well. Um, that's, that is the duty of our government. Um, if we don't like something at the state level, we reach out to our representatives. You do it as select board member to our delegation, I do it as a constituent to our delegation, same for the federal level, I've reached out to our congressman as well before on issues. It's the, it's the process, and if that doesn't work, that's when the, the powers that be can decide whether to put it on a ballot. But I say let the process, very similar to what Mr. Golden's saying, let's let the process play out, let's see what happens.
Let me ask you, what, delaying it to fall town meeting, what's the problem with taking a, uh, no action like we're doing tonight and wait and see this non-binding vote? It, it, it is, it's government of the people for the people. If the people want one way or the other, then that's how we should, that's what should we do with this, this article.
Well, then these are things that we should have thought about before we closed the spring warrant, where you've now looked at the debate from both sides, didn't like what you were hearing, you yourself have changed your vote, and now you're telling us to, now you're telling...
No, no, I haven't changed my opinion.
You haven't changed your point of view, which is what you said, but you changed your vote. So, what you're doing is you're creating more confusion.
Like I said.
Like I said, I would let the process play out.
Good, I, I hope it does.
Hi, Mark Polsonelli, I'm Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member. Um, I'll be brief, I do share Mr. Canty's concerns about the timing of this non-binding ballot question with town meeting being this Saturday. I, it, it doesn't make sense to me, um, and then I'd also just like to point out, similar to what Matt was saying, I mean, there's 100, I think it's 162 of us, town meeting members, um, there's nine in each precinct, my precinct is my neighborhood. We spend our time up, you know, leading up to town meeting, talking to our neighbors, they reach out to us, we reach out to people we know, so, we kind of are the referendum, we're voting whatever our neighbors tell us they want to see happen. You know, of course, sometimes it's very 50/50, and maybe then it makes more sense to go to a, a ballot to get the actual numbers of who votes which way, but I can tell you at least from my precinct, and actually, people from all around town have reached out to me, but specifically, everybody who I've been able to talk to in my precinct, many of which have reached out to me, me, I've reached out to some of them, have been unanimous in what they want. And I don't even need to say which way they want it, but that's how I plan to vote, because that's what my constituents are telling me to do. So I, I just don't see how a referendum is any more helpful than the town meeting process. Thanks.
Just to follow up on what you're discussing now, um, logistically, um, to my knowledge, when a question goes on the ballot, you have the summary of the question of the article of what you're proposing, and if you vote yes, thank you. Pat McCarthy, Precinct 18.
Anyone else? Derek, do you know if, um, anyone's spoken with the, the clerk's office, Kelly? Oh, is she here?
Uh, yes, I can, I can, I can answer that, that question. Uh, so the town clerk and town council have met today to start to look at this question, uh, and per the chart, uh, as Ms. McCarthy reported, there is a requirement that in the, in any ballot question, we have to describe what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. So, uh, if this moves forward, we will be prepared to bring this back on April 8th for the board to vote what those questions mean.
Thank you.
And I just have to say, we already have another non-binding referendum question that's on as well, so we'd be bringing that one forward as well.
Do you wanna speak?
May I be recognized?
Yeah, just put your, uh, make sure the green light's on, please.
It is, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, the green light is on. Okay, I'll lean in, how's that? Like Cheryl Sanders said, um, "Good evening, my name is Mara Kelly, I'm a resident of Plymouth, I've lived here for, since 2013. Um, I'm just becoming familiar with this type of government, as in town meeting, I come from a different system, actually have lived in a couple of different places, so, um, I just wanna speak to Mr. Quintle's, um, statement that is confusing about the law, I think that's what you said, right? Um, so I just wanna make sure I, I have it right, right, in layman's terms. So, from my understanding, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, um, Massachusetts passed a law by, through the legislature, which was approved by the governor back in October, and that law changed gun laws to improve gun safety in the state of Massachusetts. Then, what happened, um, the law said that, uh, the new law said that we could no longer have guns in municipal buildings and public places, right?
I think would it, would the, would the bill pass, it's still passed, but with the legislature, if you will, or the governor, however, because I don't know it all, but I'm sure my legal eagle over here does, um, and, um, correct me if I'm... But it's given each community the right to opt out of the public building, meaning town hall.
Right, so I was gonna get to that point.
So, it's not, we're, the way it was presented to me was, we are accepting all the improvements, uh, uh, more restrictive gun laws, but each community had the right to opt out, which is what I understood the chief asking us to do.
Right, I understand.
And since I've been sitting here, basically, the way I understand it and the way I said it, was it's the same way it's been since the pilgrims landed. As, as we stand here tonight, as we're sitting here tonight, as I have for 20 years, it's the same, nothing's changing, if anything, on the outside of these doors, yes, they are stricter, and the community's accepting every other part of the law, but the legislature gave us the right, this wasn't our chief's idea to do that, it's an option, he came before me, and I respect what he requested. That doesn't mean everybody else has to, and maybe I don't have it 100%, you know?
So...
But I, that's the way I understand it, you know?
Okay, so I think I understand it the same as you, I'm just trying to make sure, um, you sounded confused and said it was confusing, but I understand that we have a law in Massachusetts, there's a clause in the law...
Yes.
...that said, any municipality, Plymouth is a municipality, can opt out of this new law, correct?
That's correct. Not out of the law itself.
Oh, just sorry, just the part, that one clause, yeah.
Just the section that appears, the public buildings.
The public buildings, right. So I came and I, I listened to the chief speak, I was here for another issue, and, um, I happened to land in this, um, which I don't need in my life at all right now, but it's a, this is important, gun safety is an important issue to me, um, it's important to my family. Um, I understand the constitution and I understand the right to carry, um, is enshrined in the constitution, but I also understand that I have a right and the employees of Plymouth have a right to go to work and be safe. I respect the chief of police's assertion, based on his years of experience in law enforcement, that Plymouth Town Hall might be a soft target if guns are not allowed in the, in the town hall, that's what he's, that's what I heard him say. Um, and I appreciate that he brought that to our attention. I, I don't want, uh, town hall employees to come to work and be afraid to be working here, because they think that they're in a soft target, but there, there's gotta be another way to deal with it. We cannot rely on licensed to carry individuals to be protecting our citizens, our residents, or our employees. Um, I, before the chief of police presented to town meeting, or, sorry, to select board, he posted on Facebook, and I'm not sure if you read this comment, but he, he asserted his opposition to the bill that became the law in October. And I might be misquoting him, but he asserted that we need...
Ma'am, it's been more than three minutes, how much longer?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize, limited to...
Don't be sorry.
But, but my point is that it's, it's not complicated, and everyone in this room, I'm sure, understands, there was a law passed by, following proper procedure by elected officials in Massachusetts. There is a clause in that law that says that municipalities like Plymouth can opt out, and that's what the chief of police was proposing us to do. We don't have to opt out, we could let the, the process go through the courts, like was raised by Mr. Golden, I think Mr. Canty might have mentioned it, maybe Mr. Mahoney. The courts can decide the constitutionality, we do not have to allow licensed to carry individuals to bring their guns.
How much more time do you need, ma'am?
Well, uh, maybe, this is totally unprepared, so I just appreciate two more minutes, would that be okay? A minute?
A minute, okay, a minute.
Okay, so, anyway, my point is, it's not confusing at all. Um, licensed to carry individuals are licensed to carry, they're not licensed to protect the citizenry. Um, it would be a grave mistake to opt out, and I hope that town meeting sees it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blitzer?
One last thing. Matt, to your question, Matt Tavarris.
I'm sorry?
I just wanna say that the reason why I, I'm making this motion tonight, I'm not trying to take town meeting's job away from them, I respect the town meeting, I was just trying to give a tool for town meeting to have. If, if town meeting wants to, to vote either way on this article, and it's overwhelmingly, uh, I'm not gonna push this, I just, I'm trying to let everybody, before you make a controversial decision, which I realized how much it was after I made my vote, I, you know, this, I wanted to listen to the citizens, so that's why I come up with this, and if I do it in, in, in next week, town meeting's over. So what I'm hoping is, you just hold off, don't take action, either way, let's wait, put it on the fall, if, if, if this even passes, it might not pass, and use the non-binding question for a tool, that's the only reason. It, it, either way, it's what the residents wants, want, that's what I want, so, this is not a political thing for me, it's, it's not something that, uh, I, I really, whatever happens Saturday will determine, I'm certainly not gonna push for this if, if, if town meeting votes it down, so, but, uh, I just think the residents, I think we need to listen to the residents.
So I'd let town meeting do its work, then, if you're not gonna push the issue after it, then let town meetings do its work, if it's yes, it's yes, if it's no, it's no, um, then, then, then the argument for a special ballot question seems to be moot at this point.
Well, unless somebody wants to bring it to a special election, and I hope that doesn't happen, because that costs us money.
And that, and that process could be the process.
I know.
You know, with all due fairness, we're talking about process, we're in the process, ma'am.
No argument, no argument.
All right.
No argument.
Last one, come on up. I thought you wanted public comment, make up your mind.
Right.
Okay, you want me to let her go first?
No, because I have something else to go into.
Uh, Charlie Votrain, Vice Chair, Precinct 4. So I hope we all realize why our government gave everybody the right to bear arms in the constitution. Do you all know why? Did you realize that our army was disbanded after we won the Revolutionary War? And they had lots of militia, and they're talking about the militia. If you can't have your gun, your single-shot musket, by the way, which takes, you can only, the British Army could fire three shots in a minute, the Revolutionary guys, maybe two. I know, I'm a, a pilgrim reenactor, I shoot a musket in the parade. So, that's why they put in that, that clause that, you know, there's a right to bear arms, because if you're a militia member in your town, what happens if we get attacked? They're gonna call on the militia to come and help defend. Does this make sense? Okay. So, not, they weren't, I think, like now we've got guns that can shoot 500 shots in a minute or something, it's just crazy. You wanna let people have, I think England has the right way they do this, you can have a gun or shotgun, but not hand weapons, and not submachine guns, you know? And to me, that's what it should be, not multiple firing, high-speed weapons. Does, anybody have any questions about that? And I'm serious, I walk, I walk in the parades, you probably, you might have seen me, we usually march behind the Mayflower float, I'm with a group called New Plymouth Guard, and we use these single-shot muskets, without musket balls, just the gunpowder, so you don't have to worry about getting shot, okay? But, it's, you have to reload it, put powder in the pan, if it's raining, guess what? That's where that saying comes from, keep your powder dry. The last parade I marched in, this, not the one too long ago, we couldn't fire the muskets a second time, because our powder got wet. We couldn't keep it dry. So that's why I'm for what the state's doing, and I think it's correct, and so, and, oh, and by the way, since I'm Vice Chair, I have been getting, getting emails from my constituents, that was mentioned by somebody earlier. Everybody is saying, we don't want, we wanna keep what the state's doing, let's accept the thing about keeping guns out of the town hall. Don't let people have the right to carry them into the town hall, public parts of the town, or the schools. I have had nobody say the opposite. Okay? Thank you.
Hi. Betty Cavaco, Precinct 6. I wasn't gonna talk about guns, but let's not kid anyone, I've already moved that motion for town meeting, so, um, and I'm pretty aware that most people already know that, at least 162 town meeting members do. Um, I wasn't here to talk about guns, I was actually here to talk about something totally different, but I do believe in our Second Amendment rights, and obviously have a completely different opinion of what we've heard here tonight. Our chief of police is one of the best in the business, one of the best that we've had, and I will always defer to them and the police, to him and the police department to guide us to do what we need to do. So, if there's no more gun conversations, I would like to get into something completely different.
Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Cavaco. If this non-binding, uh, question, ballot question were to move forward, uh, would you still move forward with your motion at town meeting?
You know what, I, I would have to, I would have to think about that, and probably, you know, speak with, uh, the moderator and to see how that would go. I mean, I guess if it's a non-binding question, it really kind of, I think people wanna debate. Um, I'm not of the mind that the question will prevail, or opting out will prevail, which is upsetting, because it is a constitutional right, um, but I think maybe if it was a non-binding question, I have a little bit of doubt with that, because I believe that the law will be overturned at some point within the near future, um, at the state level. because I believe that the law will be overturned at some point within the near future, um, at the state level. So, um, I, I think that, I wouldn't be opposed to a non, I, you know, I've, I've done non-binding questions, uh, on our ballot a couple times already. So I love that, that conversation, and I love the engagement of the people, um, of the townspeople. So I wouldn't be opposed. But I think I've already moved the question. I think we'll see what the motion is at town meeting. So it, it kinda like, whether I wanna do it or not, um, it's already kinda set into place. So if someone doesn't move the motion at town meeting, obviously, the debate is dead. So I'm not, I don't know if I-
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't know, perhaps our town clerk might know, um, if, at this point, since the motion has been made, is it possible for Ms. Cavaco to withdraw her motion?
It is, the motion, the motion has been submitted, but it hasn't been made on town meeting floor yet.
Knowing that, would you withdraw your motion if we move forward with a ballot question?
I, I may. I think, I think the biggest issue that I'm having is that we are not taking the advice of our chief of police. That's my problem. And he's the professional. He's the one that knows everything that there is to know, along with our police force. I'm quite sure that there's probably no policemen that are saying, yes, let's not opt out. Um, I mean, we have, I think the problems that I have is that we have no way to enforce that, what we're doing, to not opt out or to stop guns. Um, that's not gonna cost a million dollars. I've always wanted metal detectors at schools. So that's really not, I think my biggest problem is, is that we have a fantastic police force and a chief of police, and people are ignoring it. And that's making me crazy. So with that being said, would I opt out? I think I would have to talk to the chief of police. And I think I would have to have that conversation with the moderator before I could turn around and say, you know what, I withdraw, I'll withdraw that motion. Because it's, that's the part that really has an effect on me is that we aren't listening to what our public safety officers are saying to us. And that's really concerning because I've attended over 600 meetings right here in this room. And no one knows if I'm a licensed carrier. No one knows if I had a gun, if I didn't have a gun. But I remember the little red button that we were supposed to have in case of an emergency that we were supposed to hit and wait for someone to come and save us. And would've taken a bit of time, and we probably wouldn't have made out so well.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I, I don't wish to usurp the authority of town meeting. And, and you, the folks who are in this room, um, from town meeting know that I'm a staunch, um, supporter of your right to debate. In fact, you also know it's really hard for me to sit there now that I'm on this side and keep my mouth shut during town meeting. Um, so I, I don't wish to staunch debate in any way, shape, or form. Um, but I, I also don't think that it's, that it's a vice for us to hear from the voters in town, uh, what they think about this issue. So-
Right.
Uh, you know, I maintain my position that I don't think that town meeting should take up this question at all. But I also think that it's fine for us to hear from the people who elect us. So I, I would be in support of this motion, should it be made. Um, and in the hopes of seeing this, again, pause at town meeting and let the, the, the real constitutional process work its way out. Thank you.
Any more comments? Mr. Canty?
So we heard from the town manager earlier that regardless of what we do tonight, we have to review the text of these proposed ballot questions next week anyways. So to me, there is no benefit to voting to put it on a ballot in, on May 17th now, before town meeting action, and then reviewing it on 4-8 again, when we could just, town, the town council, town clerk can work on proposed language, we could hear this item on 4-8, let town meeting do their work, talk to their constituents. If it's, I assume town meeting members are gonna do their job and talk to their constituents. And if there's overwhelming, um, support one way or the other, it may make the ballot question moot. But at a minimum, we shouldn't interfere, in my opinion. Shouldn't interfere in the town meeting process um, by putting this ballot question on the ballot now and basically sending a message to town meeting that we don't really- I think they're gonna receive the message regardless of what we mean it, as that we don't really care what they think. Uh, I, I would also say that even if the current proponent of moving it at town meeting decides that she doesn't want to move it anymore, any other town meeting member or any other person that can make a motion at town meeting could move it. So it's still a live issue up until the dissolution of the special town meeting. So those are my comments. Um, thank you.
So do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, correct? And do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Golden, discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
So, uh, this is obviously a very polarizing issue, maybe one of the top three polarizing issues in the country today. Um, I agree with a lot of the comments with respect to town meeting is Saturday. Um, I anticipate this being moved and there being probably a healthy, passionate, and lengthy debate on this topic. But at the end of the day, if this gets on the ballot, the only people who win are those people who make lawn signs. They get into a higher tax bracket, and that's it. This will just further divide the community. And I don't see a benefit for putting it out there, whether one side wins 55 to 45 or 52 to 48. Um, I do see the benefit of putting this on the, the agenda to come back and talk about it next Tuesday. We're already talking about potentially another binding question, potentially going to the ballot on an entirely different topic. So that looks like that might be on the agenda for Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 8th of April. And, um, if we're gonna talk about one question, there's nothing wrong with holding off on this one and talking about two.
Mr. Blitzer?
To me, if I table it till the next meeting, town meeting's over. And this is not, what I'm trying to do, it, it won't be effective. What I'm trying to do is have town meeting just not take any action. Use this tool, and I, I've said it now, this is probably my fourth time, I've, I've been, as my friend out there tells me I talk too much. But I just wanna, it doesn't make sense because for this to be effective, it's, if, if, it has to be voted on tonight. It's, because town meeting is on Saturday, so, uh, it, I'm, I'm trying to urge them not to vote, use this May 17th ballot question as a tool to make it, vote with a better, uh, understanding of what the residents feel in the fall town meeting. So it, so that's why, so if we, if we don't vote for tonight, town meeting's gonna, i- if they don't take no action, and they take action, then this is a moot point. It really is. So it's, so if, if the motion, if, if you want this to happen next week, it's, 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 it's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna withdraw my motion. I'm gonna ask for a vote tonight. If you don't wanna vote on this, don't vote for it. That's as simple as that. I wanna hear from the residents. And I'm on the record right now in front of everybody at home and everybody here, I wanna listen to the residents. I respect all the town meeting members that, there's a few out here, precinct chairs, I respect you. But you're 162, you're not 60,000. So I'm giving you, it's the way you can vote to represent your constituents. I'm, I'm trying to give you a tool. So if you don't wanna vote it, uh, tonight, then just don't vote it at all, and just vote against us. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. Canty?
Vote no.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? You're confusing me.
I'm confusing myself. So, um, and like I said, I had, I had no thought of speaking about guns. But, um, now that we're on to the next, um, issue, um, I had a very interesting conversation, um, with a board member that I serve on another board outside of the town of Plymouth. And one of the topics of conversa, case, conversation was a residential tax exemption. Um, and I found it very interesting that the town of Plymouth, who has such a huge influx of people, come summertime, we go from somewhere from 65,000 residents to 90,000 residents, hasn't visited a residential tax exemption. So I did a little bit of research, and, and I have a little bit of packets for you, and I can certainly email them to you. Um, but there are residential, um, tax exemptions in the towns of, um, Barnstable, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Nantucket, Provincetown, Somerville, Tisbury, Waltham, Watertown, and Eastham, which is what just happened. Now, a residential tax exemption is an option that allows homeowners to reduce their property tax burden. And one of the ways of doing that is that part-time residents are taxed at a higher tax rate than our full-time residents. One of the things that we always used to get as, um, you know, when we were on the Board of Selectmen is that people wanted us to do, you know, a, a separate tax rate for commercial businesses. We just don't have the ability to do that without adversely affecting those businesses. So I put together some information for the board. What I would like to see is for the board to direct our town staff to look into these tax exemptions, to see if there's any way that we can reduce taxes for especially our most vulnerable senior population. Um, so I did put together some of it. I, I'm kind of, it was like an aha moment because it was someone from Eastham. And I just said, don't we have someone on, on, in town that lives in Eastham? And I completely forgot that, um, our assistant town manager lives there. So, but I have information. I would like the assessors, and I know David's an assessor. I would, well, yeah.
Ms. Cavaco, you've had three minutes. How much more time would you like?
I need another minute, and I would like to give this information to all of you.
That's fine. Thank you.
So, um, I will give that to Mr. Janeo, who can pass it out to you. But like I said, I am just hoping that, um, the select board will take a look at it, and maybe we can come up with, uh, tax classification for, um, when we set the tax rate in June or July. So that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Great, thank you.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. My name is Jenny Healy. I am, um, a resident of Plymouth and, uh, part of precinct three. Just a little shout out to precinct three, which I've gone to a few meetings. And it, they've been really wonderfully energetic and cordial and, um, but very rigorous debate, and I, I really appreciate that. I wanna say a few quick things before I go into the main, um, meat of my, of my, um, comment. One is I want to applaud the work of the HSS. That was, I had no idea that was going on, and I think that is absolutely phenomenal. Um, I wanna reiterate what has been said here a couple times, what was said by, um, Jerry Sirico and I in a recent conversation, which is, he said to me, you and I might differ on this gun situation. He said, but I'm gonna vote the way you're gonna, the way you want me to vote because you voted for me. And that's my job. My job is to represent you, and the other people would come with similar. And I really, um, have tremendous respect for that. I also would like to add briefly that the Massachusetts chiefs of police all endorsed fully the, um, gun legislation that was passed. Um, and I throw absolutely no shade on our chief. I don't know him well enough. I, I have nothing but respect for the man. I don't. Um, but I, I would argue the point that he is not the be-all and the end-all anymore that I am in terms of who the voters are. Um, and a lot has changed since the time of the pilgrims, Mr. Quintil. A lot has changed. Um, so this is the meat of what I wanna say. I am concerned about the agenda item entitled, "Select Board to Discuss Adding a Non-Binding Ballot Question for May 2025 Local Election Vote Anticipated." The discussion and vote that were taken in regards to that agenda item may not be in compliance with open meeting laws. According to the mass.gov site, quote, "The list of topics must be sufficiently specific to reasonably inform the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting," end quote. This language is taken directly from the, um, Open Meeting Law Guide and Educational Materials from the Office of the Attorney, Attorney General of Massachusetts, page 10, under the heading, "What Information Must Meeting Notices Contain." The agenda item as stated above, which is a direct quote from tonight's agenda of the towns, on the town's website, does not appear to comply with that requirement, as it is vague, gives no specific information about the subject of the non-binding ballot question. The public had no way to know whether this concerned Article 12, for example, or something completely different. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but I do put this forward as, um, a concern that I have, um, in terms of transparency. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Okay, no? Okay. Town managers report?
All right, good evening, everybody. So I would start off by just announcing that, um, the third edition of the Worcester Mag, Jesus, the Plymouth Magazine on the Move has been, um, has been issued. Um, these, we went to print today. Um, the hard copies will be available first at town meeting. Casey Kennedy, our communications coordinator, will be distributing these Saturday morning. Uh, but for those who wanna read it earlier than Saturday, you can go to our website. This magazine has been posted, uh, on the town's website effective this evening. Um, so again, more good information is provided in those materials. I also want to let the board know that, uh, we've been, we've been exploring other ways to disseminate information to the community. As you know, we've had a show for about three years now called This Week in Plymouth, where we, I would host it, and we'd bring individuals in, and we'd have, we'd discuss various, um, pertinent topics to town government. Now that we have a communications coordinator, we've expanded that approach, and now we have This Week in Plymouth on the road. Um, so that's a segment where, uh, our communications coordinator will meet with various departments and go on the road and talk about, you know, various subjects, um, in, in the community. So for example, um, there was, um, a segment to discuss the new body cam program, where she interviewed various folks from the, uh, the Plymouth Police Department. Uh, and then today did a new segment, uh, talking about the hydrant flushing program. So we'll continue that. Uh, we hope folks find that, um, informative. And then additionally, we started another This Week in Plymouth live edition. Uh, that segment, um, is where we, uh, go back in studio, but it's live, where we allow folks, uh, from the community to call in, ask questions. So we did a segment, uh, to talk about bird flu, and we had the health director, Karen Keen, uh, who went live for about 45 minutes and answered a bunch of questions, again, to, uh, issues that are pertinent to the community at the time. So we'll continue to think of new ways to provide information, uh, back to the community. Um, in addition to that, I just wanna give an update on Full Sail. Uh, so as you know, um, you know, town- an update on the full sale. So, as you know, you know, town meeting had provided funding for about $650,000 to purchase the six parcels at full sale. We've executed those acquisitions. You'll see starting next week that, under the direction of David Gould, we will start the abatement process. So, we do know that there is some hazardous materials in the shingles of that building. So, that'll start next week. Once that's complete, we will then move towards tearing down the building. A notice of intent will be submitted very soon to the Conservation Commission. Once that is complete, we plan on tearing down that building. So, the timeline right now on the full sale property is to tear down the building by late spring, hopefully at the latest. We'll pause any other further improvements on that property, not to disturb the residents during the summer months. Once the summer is over, then we will then go ahead and start executing those improvements and starting construction thereabouts this fall. So, hopefully, all of the work that was promised at town meeting will be complete by late fall of this year. I want to provide an update regarding federal grants. I know this will probably be a question at town meeting, so I'll foreshadow a little bit of this. You know, we continue to track federal grants on a regular basis. We know there's kind of a lot of uncertainty at the federal level with, you know, how the money is flowing. We did receive an EDA grant this past fall for $350,000. That is the money that is being used to hire an outside consultant for the master planning process of the 1,600 acres at Holtek. We submitted for our first tranche of money, about $52,000, and we did get reimbursed. So, that's a positive indicator. As you know, we have a $10 million NOAA grant that's going to move the dredging project over at the Jenny Griss Mill forward. We just submitted this week for our first tranche of money for that as well. So, hopefully by the end of this week, we will have a better sense of whether or not that money continues to flow. But we are confident, we haven't received any notice that that money will not continue to flow down at the local level. But we'll keep folks posted, you know, if any changes were to take place. I want to talk about the boardwalk project, which is right at the town boat ramp. So, as you know, I've been reporting throughout the winter months that we were hoping to have that project wrapped up by early March. We run into a few different challenges, and those challenges have brought us to execute a contract with a contractor called Lawrence Lynch. Once that contract is executed, they will go ahead and finish the project. So, although delayed, we do believe that we'll still complete that boardwalk project no later than mid-May. I want to recognize, first and foremost, the fire department. We had a, we had a large fire a couple Fridays ago, and that displaced about 20 individuals. And so, want to thank the fire department for their quick action and ensuring the safety of those individuals that lived in that home. But unfortunately, you know, that building was lost, at least a few of the units, which displaced 20 individuals. Most of those individuals were found a home quickly, to the thanks of Chris Horvath, our emergency management director. We had one individual who they could not find a place for that individual to stay. So, Karen Keen, our health director, has a relationship with the owner of Pilgrim Sands, was able to make that connection. And a lot of gratitude goes to Pilgrim Sands, who actually homed that individual for a few days until that individual could find permanent housing. So, again, I want to thank Pilgrim Sands publicly for stepping up and being a great community partner for housing that individual. And I also want to thank Karen Keen, Chris Horvath, and certainly our fire department for their swift action to ensure the safety of those 20 individuals. The town clerk is still here, just making a PSA that the town annual reports are in. For those folks who want a hard copy annual report, you can go to the town clerk's office and receive one. Those annual reports, like the Plymouth on the Move magazine, will be readily available at town meeting as well. And then last, I just want to mention that you may no longer see the electronic bird flu signs on Court Street and on South Street. The bird flu has tapered off. However, you know, working with state officials, there is a belief that, you know, some of the bird feces that is now in the parks, you know, may contain the virus. So, these signs have been placed in all our parks and playgrounds, just educating families and parkgoers that to make sure they watch where they're stepping, if they were to step on some feces, just to be aware that it could be contaminated with the bird flu, and that they should take appropriate precautions in order to prevent themselves from infection. So, we'll continue to monitor that situation through the summer months as well. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Derek, thank you for your update. You mentioned federal grants. The governor's office earlier today announced that there are about $106 million in K-12 grants that were terminated by the Trump administration. Any idea how that will affect Plymouth?
I don't. I received that same notice as well. I have not had the opportunity to speak with the school superintendent to determine whether or not those cuts will have any negative impact on our school children. But I will find out.
Derek, it's great to hear that we're moving forward and making progress on the full sale. That building should be demoed before, I'm guessing, Memorial Day weekend. Is there a finished plan? There was extensive meetings in outreach with the stakeholders down in that village, and, you know, the people in the area. Do we know that this, does David already have a finished plan, that he knows he'll implement in the fall? Or are there still more meetings planned with the neighborhood down there?
There's still more design that needs to take place before they are complete. I can circle back with David Gould to determine whether or not, if he still plans on having any more public listening sessions. But I can find out.
So, I would just suggest that if there's still more design upon that finished product, that there is another couple, at least maybe one down there and one in this room, public hearings, so that we can advertise that, and these people can critique the finished product, and we have plenty of time to adjust it accordingly.
Absolutely.
Derek, John, I might be able to help you on this. I had a conversation with David a couple of weeks ago. Once the, it gets, you know, he's going to take the building down before the summer starts, and the residents know this, or a few of them, their butters. But after the, he's not going to do any of the work till after the season's over, not to disrupt them. They're happy about that. As he gets closer to the, you know, the project, the engineering, everything done, he wants to have a public meeting. It'll probably be sometime this summer, I would think. He wants to go as far as he can with the design, you know, getting the project done. And then he's going to sit with the residents and talk about the, what they're going to do with the beautification. And we've already had the basics, you know, the information, what we're going to do. But the final touches, he definitely, definitely going to have at least one public meeting, okay, in plenty of time. So, okay, sometime this summer.
Anything else? Okay. New business? John?
Mr. Chairman, do we have a placeholder meeting for Saturday morning? Are we meeting?
Yeah, we are.
Is that a 7:30 or 7 o'clock start?
I don't have it in front of me, but 7:30, Jay? Yeah, 7:30.
Okay. And I just had one other thing. Obviously, sitting up in that room for executive session and looking out at the Koopla or in the 1820, do we have a location on the Eagle, Mr. Town Manager? And I was just wondering if we can get a location and a status and why the Eagle isn't sitting up on the Koopla.
We can.
Any other new business? Letters? Old business? Motion?
Make a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business.
A second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.